Excited to show it in the future, so go ahead. As all the signage and stuff are going to be bricked up and capstones and it's all the same type of color. It looks really good. Here you can see the trees are planted. Great job by the team that was out there doing the landscaping. They put that stuff in there like all like that. They've been putting grass down and sod. I think the entire parking lot is basically completed. It's really beautiful.
Four seasons, right? Let's give them credit while we're talking about it.
There was a few of them out there, so I'm just trying to make sure I give the right one. Yep. So right now, this was taken yesterday. This is where we actually are in the park. You can see the three wheels, yellow. The top right is red and then the bottom one. This is the ideal section here. And the next slide is going to give you kind of a different view from the other side.
Go back, Brandon, and point out A, B, and C.
Okay. So as we go across, this will be, this is A. This would be V. This is going to be C. And then this is the main.
You're facing the pavilion, right? A on the left, so you rotate clockwise.
Yeah, it's left to right. And then this is our T-ball field. This is our vendor area playground, parking lot. And so kind of the west side right now, but we're going to take advantage, point from right here. This shows us looking back towards, this is Batter's Boulevard. This is Cornerstone and then Highway 25 is over here. So this is the approach coming into Cornerstone. You can see here the trees and the landscaping look great. The fields are in great shape. This quad is basically completed. It's connected as you can see here. Next slide.
Can you go back real quick? So kids are playing and we're having baseball games. Where would the food trucks be, uh, food carts be positioned?
Trailers? Trailers are going to be up here in quads.
Okay, okay.
Each quad will have their own and then we have the primary that's underneath.
Okay.
This is the parking lot. So they have graded this. They've got some additional dirt. They're really working on trying to get this paved.
I think we've got like four days of good weather next week, so hoping, hoping that that will happen next week.
That is the intent is to get it done almost immediately. So you can see how nice this is going to look from above and it doesn't even have the finishing touches yet.
How many cars do you anticipate in the parking lot?
About 640 carts. We also have additional space, which we could use all of this additional space. And over here, there's another 50 acres that's directly accessible for any type of overfill parking. The main pavilion is our main feature point. So here you can see the front of it looking down. This is where the statue of Pope Pape will be. This was a, uh, what shall we call it? A sign created by the CDB. So it glows at night and stuff. It's really nice and looks really good out there.
Have we got a front lawn picture of that one?
Yeah. So this is, this is what it would look like as we walk into the stadium. What's nice about it is that you got the statue with the pedestal here and it still has this kind of ball diamond effect to it. So it's very, you know, it's all connected with some angles. The sign is fantastic. The shade through here is great. This will say Accrison Fazahin. It looks really good. And as you can see, all the concrete work up here has been completed, so we're just pending the statue at this point. That statue won't come until we get closer to the opening. This is quad C where you saw the red tops. When you walk out of the parking lots two weeks ago, this is what that looked like. So that's what it was two weeks ago. Now if you can look at the next one, this is the finished piece of this. So here the finishedness is you got the turf field. We got our logos. All of the dugouts are completed. All of the canopies are up. We're missing a few touches here. The bathrooms are completed. Everything in this quad is basically 95% complete. It needs to be cleaned. It needs to be leveled. Needs to be sanded, but outside of that, all the construction has been done. This is what a finished quad would look like. So here, this is the B quad. This is the standard fields. We have the bat nets for the pitchers. We have all the scoreboards in. All the lights have been tested. All the canopies are up. The batting cages do need nets. That's the only thing that's over here. They need to finish grading and siding. And that quad should be completed. Now they had people out there this week doing cleaning in the bathrooms and such as they were working towards the front of the building. So that brings us back a little bit of kind of like where are we with this other quad? Well, this again, you can see here, there's a lot of sod work that still needs to be completed up in this area through here. This area is not concreted and the reason it's not concreted is because that's where they're bringing their cement trucks. So they need to leave it open so we're not driving off the concrete. Next one. This is the connector. You can see they've already started to do the connection down here. This is by far the lowest area out there and it's the hardest to get dry. So anytime there's moisture out there, if you put the concrete, it's going to move and crack. We can't take that chance right now. The more days in a row we get with warm weather and wind, the better off we are. Go ahead, next one. So you can see this is after a day of them just grading some of the area out, how fast it starts to come together in the nice weather. So if we can get a few days, all of this area is going to be concreted. And so what's really important is that we get some good weather. Some of the other things that are probably less glamorous is the maintenance shed completed. We should be having that handed over to us relatively soon, if not early next week. Bathrooms look great. They're finished. It's really nice. This pitcher doesn't do justice. The bathrooms look great. All of this has been completed, so this is the sod, the trees and the playground. So playground is also completed. So where, we need to get some concrete in quad A. And that is basically the big thing right now that they're working on, but every time it rains, every time it's damp, but they got to go regrade. So we really need to stay off of those areas. Asphalt is next. They're looking to asphalt the entire parking lot except for a small section for concrete trucks. And they're planning to do that in the next two weeks. They're also right now working on grading out those red and yellow quads. So we may potentially have the ability to use those in the future. IT systems are being checked. Joel's people have been out there recently and they're getting everything hooked up. So we need to go through that process to make sure all our warning systems and connectivity is completed. And then we need to actually get our equipment out there. So there's a little bit that has to be done, but I don't think that any of this is a showstoppers. I do think that we're still on target to open sometime in 2023, so.
Don't say it like that.
I, I think that will be early, early summer. I think it's going to be up in any way this summer.
Um, equipment installation, what have you been talking about?
We have a lot of concession stand equipment. We have some, some of that kind of stuff. Fire notifications, addresses.
So we're looking at doing, I'll call it a beta test.
Yes.
Of two tournaments that are the end of May and the first of June. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the quads B and C are going to be tested in the soft opening to make sure the toilets work, to make sure all of our utilities are functioning correctly. You know, we can turn them on for 10 minutes and have success, but are they going to operate during a pressure situation? We have some pretty large events that we want to showcase in July. We have an All-Star game coming to town. We have the Jeffrey Simmons stuff to come in. We have a lot of those types of things. We're looking at another tournament that might go out there. And if we're going to do that kind of stuff to showcase ourselves off, we definitely want to make sure nothing breaks down.
So we're shooting for, and I say shooting for with great caution, an opening of June the 30th, which is a Friday.
It is.
So, um, but we're, we're looking at that, but again, the soft openings that we want to try will be a test.
A lot of our, a lot of our concern is the asphalt. So right now, if we don't get the asphalt put in the way it needs to, we're not going to be able to do certain things. And we would really ask people, we understand you're curious about what it looks like, but please stay away. A lot of people are driving out there creating extra work and they're rutting it up. And that just means that the contractor is going to have to take longer to do certain things. So we just ask you to please be patient. Everyone's going to get a chance to be out there and just kind of stay away.
Okay.
All right.
What else? Oh, I'm sorry. The water system?
Yes, ma'am.
The walking trial?
Fantastic. 1.3 miles all the way around. It has a bridge. We have a number of detention areas that kind of wander into some nice habitat like vegetation areas. Definitely is going to be a huge, huge user there. I think that.
It's asphalt?
Yes. Yep. So the asphalt top and then on the sides, there'll be some rocks and grass growing up towards it. So right now we went around it and tried to grade a lot of it because it was rutted up from vehicles. And there's some repairs because they used some heavy equipment out there that wasn't expected, so.
Okay, 1.3 miles.
1.33. And detention areas can get us up to about 1.71, 1.72.
All the way up, you mean?
Okay. Great job. Well, the great job is the, is the board, the previous board, the mayor and all the people in the city and the community who supported this project. I mean, this is really something that is going to change Starkville for the better and it has been truly a team effort, you know, so.
It's hometown kid here.
2023.
Thank you, sir. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot.
A quick thing about the pool. So next slide, please. So we got the pool all put up from last year from the car breaking into it or crashing into it. And we also have the ceilings put up, which should be finished this week. We are planning to open this summer. Next slide. Uh, May 27th, we're going to be offering swim lessons, general swim. We are in desperate need of lifeguards. So if anybody knows anybody who can lifeguard, please have them get in touch with us. If you can go to the next page. If you go to starkvilleparks.org, at the very bottom of that page, there is an appointments section. If you click it, it will give you this page and all you have to do is apply. If not, send us an email and I will reach out to you personally. And we're paying $13 an hour for lifeguards. So, and we need 10.
How about at Cornerstone? I'm guessing that you're going to need a lot of part-time people out there, support people out there.
Yep. We have been hiring a number of members from the community. So I think we've increased around 40, 40 part-time positions to this point. We do expect to add some more as we go.
And that's excluding umpires and referees and that sort of thing?
Correct.
These are, these are.
These are bottom line jobs to the community. Everything from grounds, facilities to food and beverage, all those types of things. Yep.
Shouldn't get summer jobs though?
Absolutely. Great loss, too.
All right. That it?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, guys, let's get into the agenda and we can, and we can talk soon. Uh, plus a second minute, Mr. Puskerson, are you comfortable with us? Is it hard to do with?
Yes.
Consent for those?
Absolutely.
Um, I have nothing, but I know off at this point in time, uh, can you have another question?
Well, you have that, he had that one diamond.
No, that's, well, that's true. I do have a notice that I'll do for, for chief. And I've got that down. Um, all right, public hearings. We've got two, second public hearing on many of the soundation ordinance. We had that for our first one last time, just to give us an opportunity to do consideration, but I have no information related to any concerns about that. Mr. Simon said you haven't heard from anybody on it? So we will have that hearing and then the board can consider the interim. Second public hearing is a variance to be due from sidewalk departments. Mr. Hallow, would you give us just a little word?
Yes, this is for five horizons. They're located on the north end of Stark Road. And it's just a, they can't put the sidewalks in due to the slope and some site constraints. So they requested the variance in the field and the board of justice appeals approved it unanimously.
Okay, um, thank you.
May I ask a question? What, what is the, what's the, um, that's my question. What's, what's going to be the issue with the sidewalk?
For them, I think it was site conditions and costs for their side.
Sure, cost drive most of it. But what is it? Sidewalks not be putting, I mean, is it, it's solid. Because we're saying play gap now you're on 12 with them playing, it was in old privileges. What, how much, what's the linear, what's the length of that?
It's about a thousand feet, linear feet.
So the cost probably was probably driving there.
I, I think the engineer probable cost is about 150,000 and the fee in lieu is about 40, I believe.
Fee we would get from, say that again, man, what?
The, the fee and load cost is 40,000, yes, sir.
So what, so the fee they were paid to not have to do sidewalk would be 40,000?
Approximately, yes, sir. It's based on just the quantity of the concrete and then in dots price for that.
And this is the far north end of Stark Intersection 182, what was it?
Yeah, on the north or at that intersection. It's at the southeast corner of the intersection of, uh, 182 and Stark.
And what is that? This is a house, they're going to build a new facility, a new building?
No, it's an existing building. They remodeled and then they triggered it due to the cost of the remodel. They triggered the sidewalk.
Is this, oh, that, the foot doctor had to put plant there on corner, northeast corner of, no, this is across, this is on the north side.
That's what Dr. Ezzy was.
Yes.
Dr. Ezzy.
Got that big hill, Dr. Ezzy.
Yes, so the foot, foot.
They would have had to do a retaining wall.
I'll ask a forward question, this question. Now we, we don't run into other issues, the sidewalks, um, big last of variances and exceptions on sidewalks. And, um, where do we draw the line with what, uh, you know, what, it's like the architecture review or any other thing to see where, where we stop? If we start raining sections, sidewalk. When the sidewalk audit was implemented 10 years ago, 15 years ago, whenever it was, intent was for us to, for all of the property on its commercial residential building, house, that kind of thing. Put a sidewalk in and as we build connectivity, where they'll connect together with our sidewalks and city life, that cost, that, that part of capital cost of the, of projects when, when they, when capital projects are being done. Now, my, my contention on that is that when people go into a project, whether it's a new one or buy, buy and build, renovate, build out, whatever you want to call it, kind of thing. That's part of the cost you incur and part of the cost you, that you, that you, it's part of your project. And just what I'm saying is that developers and, and people put in, in, in business, things like that, that's part of what you anticipate of when you go in and you, and you stay in a lot of buildings, I want from a business, that kind of thing. So where, where do we start kind of drawing a line on the, I know as next guy comes in down the road on the east side of Stark Road and wants to accept, says, okay, the guy's the corner guy. What do we just, what do we do? And, and Dana, I mean, you're our city planner, kind of give us some guidance on that.
As far as a variance goes, variance is not like a rezoning, a rezoning sets a precedent for that area. A variance is an individual case by case issue. Where this one is actually, this site is actually located, it's improbable and impractical to put any sidewalks now or in any time in the near future. Across the street, we could use the fee in lieu to actually make a connection that makes sense where existing sidewalks had been installed.
Is, um, are the sidewalks across the street on the west side of Stark Road?
There are, there are sidewalks on that side. There are no other sidewalks on the east side.
There's no bell on the east side.
And there's no, there's a big gaps where it can never be completed because there's a subdivision there, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hallow. Uh, next one is consideration of adopting an updated fee and fine schedule. Each department has gone through and looked at the fees associated with the various subsidiary things, building department, soundation, engineering. And this is just an update of that, so we will have an opportunity to take a look at that. All right, uh, under board business, we've got an appointment for two unexpired terms and they were, um, we have two, two applicants, I believe, um, for each one of those terms. We, I'm sorry.
We missed it. Like, can I prove property?
Oh, I apologize. I scratched through it and then I, and then I unscratched through it and didn't pay attention about unscratching. Uh, yes, we have the developer's agreement and so we've gone through it and this is what we've agreed, this is what we're willing to do and we'll see if they're agreeable. So, yes. Um, and that, you know, that's one of the things that y'all want, that y'all want to do that. Mike has been, uh, Mike Brooks has been the one who has been discussing that with Mr. Ozwald, who owns the property. And, um, this is kind of where we are. Our, our staff has met numerous, numerous times on it. Mr. Puskerson has weighed in on it, so, um, this is kind of what we're willing to do. This is a, the, they're getting our water and sewer through the utilities department. And so we have requirements that we're asking them to meet, which are inspections and making sure that they are being, uh, meeting our specifications of bedding and streets and stormwater and all that sort of thing, so.
And that's necessary because this is outside the city limit?
Yes, yes. We are, other than that, we have no other way.
They would do these things if they were in the city limits?
Yes, yes.
And what's the cost of the power, the, bring utilities to this, this outside city limit? Well, how much cost we going to incur on that?
Well, they're doing the, they're doing the development, so they're putting in.
They're putting more on, but also they just connect all those lines, you know, and we're not prepared to offer anything.
No, what we bear the cost of, in my opinion, is, is the fact that they're taking some of our capacity, but, you know, they're obviously going to be paying, they're going to be paying customers, so. Um, and we're also, they are going to bear the cost of the inspections because they're going to have spring or do the inspections that we would normally be doing for someone who didn't be paying in our, uh, general point.
Yeah. See what Mike Brooks said about that?
I'm sorry?
Well, see what Mike Brooks said about that?
Okay, well, he, the last time I talked to him, he was in agreement, but we will, we will move forward, so. Two unexpired terms with October County Care Attention. And I don't, we had, we did, we had two applicants in the packet. Okay, so you want consent for those two applicants? That'd be great, okay. Under airport, we've got a sub applicant for professional engineering services. Lincoln is here if y'all have any questions. This is, all right, thank you. This is Mr. Harden's, um, company. And then the lowest quote for a hanger electrical, consent for that one? Um, community development, two public hearings for the, admitting the unified developer code. Mr. Hallow, you want to jump real quickly and just give a real brief?
This is just part of our ongoing updating of the code. There are several things that we just kind of think need to be addressed to kind of smooth out the development process.
Okay, all right. Any questions about this, it just follows the public hearing, consent, okay? Uh, allow Mr. McCasty to travel to, um, the Department of Archives, History and Historic Preservation Bootcamp, which just gives me a really interesting visual. So, um, yes, consent for that one, all right? And then a request for a COA for Greensboro Street, Daniel, any?
If, this is an addition to the rear of the house. There'll be a, a garage that will be slightly visible from the front and then there's another accessory structure in the far back. And this went through the Historic Preservation Commission and they voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Got it, all right. All right, under engineering, we have interlocal agreement with Mississippi State. To complete the Spring Street project, was y'all call we approve? And so this is just that interlocal that, that moves it forward. Consent for that one? Okay. And then approving the proposal from Neil Shaker on the environmental assessment for Main Street improvements. We went out to get that bid because it came in from Kimball Horn and I believe $88,000 and so we have saved some money. So consent for that one? Okay. Um, excepting the lowest quote for, I don't remember, Gueveco, Gueveco something, I don't know. I don't know that. Gueveco?
Yes, Gueveco.
All right, Gueveco markings for, um, street department on the intersection at Cornerstone Boulevard, which is going to be really fun. It's going to look like a baseball, uh, stitching a baseball, so really cool. So is this what that was? All right.
Is that, is that paper, are you going to file the paperwork?
No, that's special tag. That's the, that should be.
Special tag.
The little bid for dump truck for that, anything about that one?
They had two bids and went through both procurement, so it's going to be a great truck.
Okay, consent for that one? And then consideration approval, change order to increase the contract sum by $9,000. What's that one, what's that one about?
This, this closes out the Louisville Street ice. And so at the end of the day, some items went up, some went down. This shakes it out, final payment, we're $9,000.
So this totally closes it out?
Yes, ma'am. That's the last payment.
All right, all right, thank you. Claim stock it will move past, um, fire fighter. We've got, uh, this is wonderful. We set to 1500, $55,000 grant for 48 sets of turnout gear, which is great. I can remember when we used to not get these grants and had to pack the turnout gear, so consent for that, okay? In HR, uh, Mr. Ashford, any of these other than replacement positions?
No, no, all replacements.
All the places, positions, consent for those, all right? Uh, let's see. And then number five is a consideration of the discipline action, so we can move that, let's move that along. Um, and then we have, uh, we take number one off under police because that's not required for more approval because it's $500 and she's in West Point, so it's not traveling too far. Utilities, service agreement with Chris McMitchell. Uh, Mr. Kemp, anything about that one you want to share?
This is just an ongoing agreement with him to provide financial or be deep data analysis that we, uh, we're able to do analysis.
Okay, and this is a renewal of an existing?
Yes.
Okay. Consent? Okay. Uh, lowest quote from fluid processing pumps on a dry pit pump for Sherwood Lift Station, anything about that one?
Just a replacement of them on this fail.
Okay, consent for that one? And change order for, uh, the Main Street Water and Sewer Improvements Project, 21 days and a price increase for sewer castings, is that right?
That's right.
Consent for that one? Authorization approved, the utility maintenance specials as a preferred vendor for substations. And that's over two years, so. And then last but not least, we have change order two for 75 calendar days for the rehab. Uh, this is in Green Oaks. They ran into a couple of point, point repairs or point connections that they had to make, is that correct?
Sewer fail, pipe failure issues, a little bit more complex than just a dig up, so they had to do some boring.
And originally anticipated, okay. But this, you think that is going to come closer, closing out that project?
We have, so I'm pushing more and trying to get that.
Consent for that one? Okay. And we have nothing for executive session, so that brings us to the end of our, for our regular, excuse me, and unless there's something else.
Oh. I, yes, thank you, ma'am. Tell me about the 15, the million, the $15 million bond issue. Do we have, I know we have bond counselor, Brad Davis, bond counselor. Have this selected a, a financial service firm that's going to?
It will be a competitive bidding.
For the financial service, what about the, the physical actual rating issue bond, did that be competitive?
Boots will do our, uh, bond rating and then once we've gone through that bond rating process, and we, we contracted for a municipal advisor, um, some time ago.
That Stevens?
Stevens. So, so they won't bid on the bonds because, because there will be kind of a diminutive interest, obviously. But for the issuance of the bonds, when we have all the things in order, which will probably be mid to late summer, um, after we've gone through the rating process, there, there will be a competitive bid process. And anybody who's in the bond underwriting business or, um, any banks or other financial institutes that are interested will have an opportunity to submit a proposal.
Very good. I just want to bring one other thing. I was talking about, you know, I heard about swimming, but everybody just kind of rolling their eyes, so. Did a little research on the water park, you know, the mention casual, might be a lot of the water park here and the expense of it and everything like that. All payable outbound for a pit, a water park 10 years ago, $2.5 million. It's been so successful, they're making money. It's been so successful. North, uh, North Port, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 40 miles south are faded. So many people leave North Port, Tuscaloosa, go up to a water park. Uh, North Port, North Port outbound is about, I sent a newspaper about, they've asked for $18 million to build a water park to keep it, or what, not to keep it. So the people that leave up there are just in the Tuscaloosa County and the Tuscaloosa, North Port area, well, they're going to cash that money in, in that, that area that I, they don't want to live in. So they are very successful, something I think y'all should look at because we look at things like how do parks affect bringing people into our city to stay in our hotels, eat our restaurants, we're going to, beyond recreation, what is the economic impact of a ballpark or, you know, any type of recreation? what's the economic impact of a ballpark or, you know, any type of recreation facility? Apparently, these things were wildly successful when they, when they built. And they, the one that paid, the staff, and they, they make money in addition to that. And the people are going to afford it, but they, their intentions, if they've paid attention to this, they're about to build a great big, you go over, look, in Tuscaloosa paper, you find an article and then get a picture of what they're about to build. But it's something that I wouldn't completely leave off the table, you know, because we have, uh, we have an area that that could be done in. It, it brings people into, into town, it will come into town. It not only for good for your local residents, but it brings people here who are going to spend money, stay overnight, hotels, eat restaurants and things. And that's important to us. And that, that's also a thing that rounds out our recreation offense for, for our citizens and, and also the economic, economic driver, potential and not potential, with the economic driver for us. But, um, I mean, I, I like, or should just consider, you know, think about it because it's, it's something I think would be good for our city. Local folks have a place to go, you know, swimming, and out-town folks have a place, they have no reason to come to Starkville and, um, and spend money up here. And I'll take it for you for it, but, uh, I just thought that kind of...
You said North Port spent $18 million?
$18 million. So, I know they're expensive, but the one in Fayette's real nice. It probably doubled what it is now, you know, just because of all the stuff, the rip cost of, so... But, um, they are, you know, they, they're, they're making money. And the folks at other places, there are other water parks in Alabama, too. I don't know what is, but they, they're a number, number of water parks over there. And they're built because they, they turn a profit, they turn, they cash flow. And they, um, and that's something that, you know, if you, if you notice that one, so... And, and that's, that's fully staffed, and with, you know, all the amenities and stuff, a couple of those things. But, um, I, I don't, I don't think I'll just not, not look at it. And, um, we, we have room, and we have key, there's other places where that, where something like that could be built. And, um, but, um, anyway, I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. There's nothing else. And we will call it a day and a weekend, and, uh, we will see everyone. Between 2:00 and 6:00. Visitation, 2:00 to 6:00, is that correct?
That, that's what Doc told us, provided.
Off record. We will, we will call this, I mean, meeting your, so, sorry, but, yes.